The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to the City Council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comments, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please fill out a blue card, which, well, blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance at the podium rail. Please give the card to the city clerk. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes and that you please avoid repetition. Please note that Mayor Lee is out of town and not present at this meeting. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the open Nevada meeting law?
Yes, we are in compliance.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Pastor John Lee from Grace Point Church, and following that, the entire troop of five, Boy Scout Troop 576 will come and lead us in the pledge. Would you please rise?
Good evening. Let's pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Lord, we must begin by confessing our failure to consistently trust in your mercy and grace. We confess that we at times have become weary and worn by political process, more often marked by disunity and criticism rather than unity and grace. We confess the ways we too grow resigned to the way things are and systems that refuse to change. Holy Father, save us from our weak resignation. Tonight, I ask that you would remind those of us in leadership how our power is to be used, not for selfish gain, but to give others a voice, hope, and opportunities. We acknowledge the many burdens that this council carries into this work. God, would you empower them and sustain them? Help them to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Give them a spirit of service. Remind them that they are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders your people need. Help them to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. We give thanks for the communities that support them, the spouses, the friends, the neighbors, and loved ones that sacrificed so that they might be here today. Bless them. Remind us of the truth from the Bible that in the welfare of the city, we will find our own welfare, and all we do, and all we ask, and all we say and may seek, that we might look for the welfare of this city. We pray for the residents of this city, for all those seeking full, meaningful employment, we pray for work, for all those seeking education, we pray for powerful teachers, for all those seeking peace, would you train us to work for justice? And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of mankind. Now to him who is able to do far more abundantly than all we might ask or think, according to the power at work within us, to him be the glory in this city and in Christ Jesus throughout all generations, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to council items. Councilmember O'Ron.
Mayor Protem, thank you very much. And of course, although I was never a scout, I highly, highly value and honor everything that the scouts stand for, and welcome. Just a couple of things there, Mayor Protem. The first one, with all, there's all sorts of fantastic events coming up here, or we're coming to that, that time of the year, and so I just wanted to promote one fantastic event that's sponsored by one of our businesses of the month, La Bonita Supermarkets, that's, they are doing a trunk-or-treat here at La Bonita Number Two, that's 2672 North Las Vegas Boulevard, that's registered right over here next to the swap meet, Friday, the 26th of October, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And it's a family event, and there should be lots of people, like myself, the councilman's going to be, this councilman will have a little thing to give out candy, and maybe people like to join us. It's a fantastic event, and I also want to thank you very much. I think the VIPS and the North Las Vegas Police are joining forces with us to, again, provide this fantastic event. Thank you very much, Chief, if you could convey that. Also, I know I'm wearing pink, and so are a couple of my colleagues here. Councilman Churchill had his pink shirt on for breast cancer awareness. He doesn't have it right now. He looks very dapper without it, but of course, we were all wearing pink, and we all had a, we took our picture here in support of breast cancer awareness. And our fire department is, they're actually spearheading, of course, their annual, there it is, their annual breast cancer awareness drive, and they're selling shirts for a very modest price, and the proceeds go to help out and in, I think, one of the, I forget which breast cancer awareness, or which breast cancer charity it is, but I urge everyone to please think of this and buy a shirt. And again, thank you to our fire department.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Councilman O'Ron, for acknowledging our Cancer Awareness Month, and to all of our Boy Scouts, Boy Scout troop leaders, the ones that are here tonight, and the ones that visit us, and the ones that are out there in the community, thank you for all you do. You're really an asset to, to all of our community and set an example that we should all aspire to, up to and including me. Let me, I wasn't here for the past two meetings. I was, I was on the desk over there and on the phone. If you didn't recognize me, I was the little voice. I had made a trip up to New York on some, some business and some family business, so I'm happy to be back. So if I go back in time just a little bit, please, you know, extend, you know, some, you know, space to me on that. I just want to go back to the, our event, our military event on September 8th, and thank all of our volunteers over there that spent an enormous amount of time during the year, excuse me, preparing for that, and to our police and fire, who did an amazing job with our color guard and Cy Nielsen, and our veterans, community people up there, and our auxiliary. We, I also want to, and again, I wasn't here, I want to take a moment to, to thank our POA Union, Mike Yoder, and our, our police members for approving the contract with the city. You know, I kind of look at that as just another step towards improving the collaboration between the city and all of our employees, and the end result of that, I truly believe, benefits all of our residents here in the city. I did have the opportunity to attend this past Saturday, past Saturday, right over here in Council Chambers, presentation to a number of World War II Filipino veterans. I think the, I want to say the youngest was 89, the oldest was 94, who received a Congressional Gold Medal of Honor. It was really a moving event to see these gentlemen here for the service that they provided the city, and all of us here in the country. We, we kind of forget how far it goes back to give us the ability to be over here tonight and talk the way we do, but, but these, these Filipino Americans sacrificed their lives, and they showed a video going back to World War II, the march, the death march that they had, where they, they lost over 70,000 people. So I just want to extend my appreciation to all of them and all of their family for what they did and what they continue to do for, for us here. Also, I wanted to mention that on September 26th, we'll be having our trunk-or-treat at the YMCA on Centennial and Stats, and that begins at, let me see, I believe, 5:00 to 7:30. And finally, a point of personal privilege, my grandchildren are in, they came in today, Nikki and Craig, and we also have Gloria and I have our great-grandchildren with us for a week, will be babysitting. So if my hair looks a little gray at the next council meeting, it may be because of that, but let me just give a shout out to Melina and Elan. I know they're watching at home, and they will be. Thank you all.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to highlight and extend an invitation. That's okay. That's my first name. We're friends. But anyway, I'd like to highlight and extend an invitation to the community for two fantastic events that are coming up this weekend on the 20th of October. Both of them are going to be held at Craig Ranch Regional Park. The first one is called Notes of Autumn. Here is the beautiful flyer for that. It's an event, a musical event featuring the musical talent of North Las Vegas students, students from 13 schools, CCSD schools, as well as some charter schools. The number of performers during the course of the day will be upwards of 300 performing students with a wide range of beautiful music selections, singing, mariachi choir, which is also singing, and regular bands, guitar ensembles, really a wide variety. It starts at 9:00 a.m., it goes every half hour, different acts, until 3:30 in the afternoon, and then that afternoon at the same park will be our annual Harvest Fest, put on by the Parks and Leisure Services Department, fun and games, trick-or-treating, jump houses, food, and entertainment. So a great day to be had at Craig Ranch Park on Saturday.
Sorry about that, Councilman Black. We've got some great things going on at North Las Vegas Schools, and continuing tomorrow at Cheyenne High School is their JAGS induction ceremony for the jobs for America's graduates, and I'll be speaking to the officers that will be inducted, just about their personal success stories and what they're planning for their future. And so it's a great time to be at a school in North Las Vegas, with all our economic growth. Hopefully, we will educate those children, and they will stay in North Las Vegas and become employed residents of North Las Vegas. Continuing along with our other students, on the 24th is the annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at the Texas Hotel, where 300 to 400 students from the Valley are invited to participate in a prayer service, and then after that, they ask questions for their, or other local elected officials, so it's a really great event. And I'd just like to extend a heartfelt thank you to all the key players and partners in my seventh annual Reading Rainbow in the Park. I don't want to name specific names, because I know I will forget someone. The kids had an awesome time. Fire Department, thank you so much for bringing one of your trucks out, and the kids really enjoyed getting skirted with the hose and also aiming the hose at the grass. It was really hard for some of them, because that water is so powerful once you turn that water hose on. We probably gave over 10,000 books away. The great thing is I have no books to store in my garage for another year, so that's a great thing. So fun was had by all. And also, our North Las Vegas Police Department will do its Safe Halloween 2018 next Wednesday on the 24th, so that's a busy day, from 5:00 to 7:00 in the Home Depot Shopping Center, so we hope to see you all there. Come in your costumes. Okay.
Moving on to the public forum. This is the time set aside to comment on posted agenda items. The public forum excludes discussion of public hearing items, which will be heard later separately. So if you want to speak on any items listed under the consent agenda, business or ordinances for final action, now is the time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards for the posted agenda items? Is that item made up for the agenda?
We just received one, so I'm just trying to determine.
Consent. Is this for? Gary Bichard?
Yeah, I prefer to speak when the item comes up for discussion.
You have to speak on a posted agenda item at this time, if you wish to speak. I'm positive. Would you like to speak now or not?
Before we start the clock, I just want to say thank you to the Boy Scouts for coming down to the City Council meeting. I want to tell you kids something. Local government is important. Local government has a bigger impact on your daily lives than the federal government. You need to vote in every election. Every American has a right to vote, no matter what color they are, no matter what religion they are. When we don't vote, we slap a military person in the state, in the face, who's defending our rights to vote. Okay, you can start the clock now. I got, I'm talking about 16 different items. Will I get like the rest of the app, will I get like a half hour here, or what?
You're going to have your three minutes.
I can't talk about that many items in three minutes. Okay, number five, here's another full liquor license that Dottie's want. Dottie's is a low-end operation. They don't pay a livable wage, they have no health insurance for their employees, and they cater to the lowest denominator, just people who are just alcoholics. They bring the neighborhood down. I wouldn't do, I wouldn't give them anything. And also, okay, all these others, all these Roadhouse, Texas Roadhouse license, they want a full liquor license, Bourbon Street, none of these places have live entertainment. There are some really good musicians in this town that can't find work anymore, because everybody's walking away from live entertainment. And, you know, we're going to have a lot of problems. How are we going to get our kids to study music, and then when they get out of school, they can't find a job playing music? We need to promote live music. Live music is what built Las Vegas. Okay, moving along. Item 12, item 13, item 14.
Those items are public hearing items.
I'm sorry, what?
Those items are public hearing items?
What does that mean?
That means you can't speak on them until they're called.
Oh, well, can't I speak on them?
Until we read them into the record.
Fine with me. I'm cool with that. I can wait.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, thanks for coming down. God bless all of you.
Moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approve City Council regular meeting agenda of October 17, 2018 for possible action.
Seeing you guys behind all those TV, those screens, it's like you're in Best Buy or something. Still not used to it. There are three changes to the agenda. The applicant for items seven and eight requests that those be continued to the November 7th meeting, and staff recommends that item 41 be continued to that meeting as well. With those changes, is our recommendation to approve the agenda as amended.
Questions or comments? I don't have a motion.
I'd like to move to approve the agenda as amended.
Moving on to consent agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Mayor Protem Goines-Brown in council, the consent agenda consists of items two through six and nine through 10. That is excluding items seven and eight. It is our recommend, staff's recommendation that the consent agenda be approved as published before you.
Okay, call for the motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mayor Protem, per the applicant for several of these items, items 12 through 18, and they also have associated items, 28 have 34. They've asked that those items be presented one time, so once I get to item 12, I will read 12 through 18, then they can do the presentation, and then we'll take a vote on all of them. Is that okay?
That's okay, and I have a blue card for items 12, 13, and 14 as well. So we'll do that after the presentation.
Right. So item 11, approve ZN 2118 Desert Gem for the applicant Allied Nevada Properties LLC to request a property reclassification from RCL Single Family Compact Lot Residential District to PUD PID Planned Unit Development District, Plan Infill Development District, consisting of 21 townhomes located south of Cary Avenue between Revere Street and Royal Street, APM 139 22103 001.
It is. Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight on behalf of the This aerial gives you an indication of where the site is. It is considered an infill piece of property. It is located right on the corner of Cary and Revere Street. The applicant has owned the property for several years. He waited, obviously, through the recession, and what really watched the market to determine what the best use of this property would be. After looking at it and studying things, especially with what happened, the development north of Cary Avenue, and this odd rectangular shape of this property, he came up with the idea of for sale townhomes. This is the project and the site plan that's before you. We worked very closely with staff. We appreciate their recommendation of approval. We also had a neighborhood meeting, and those in attendance asked great questions and also expressed support and no concerns for the project. The Planning Commission recommended approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any comments or question? Councilman O'Ron?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Ms. Lazovich, thank you very much for, for coming. I just have a couple of questions. What is the approximate square footage of these townhomes?
They're just shy of 2,000 square feet, so right around 1,900 square feet.
Relatively roomy for, say, a starter home, something like that.
Yes, three bedrooms, two bath, two-car garage.
Now, as I understand, entrance is not going to be right off Cary. You'll, you'll be having, apparently, to drive around, so people who live here will not have to, like, front onto Cary, is that correct?
That is correct. We don't have any driveways that are onto Cary. We have one long driveway that comes off of Revere and goes over to Rural Crest, and then our driveways are onto our internal driveway.
And it looks like it has decent greenery around it, right?
Yes, we placed our open space on the southern end of our site, which is where I'm pointing now. There are some existing homes here, so by doing this, it also pulled these homes farther away, created a bigger buffer, but we have provided open space back here and for use by our residents as well.
Fantastic. Do you have any sort of like a, an idea of what the, the price point is going to be for the, for this, for this project?
They think if, you know, in today's prices, right, I have to kind of qualify that, but they think that if they were to build it and the market stayed fairly steady like it is now, it would come in under 200,000 for start, for the base price.
Wow. Well, I'll tell you, all, everything else being, being the way it is, I think there's definitely a market for reasonable townhomes, you know. I mean, number one, not everybody wants to live in a house. Number two, not everybody, especially a young couple starting off, can afford a, a full, you know, 2,600 square foot house. As, I remember as a young guy working my way through, through college, wow, this would have been a nice alternative compared to, you know, some, some place I had lived. This seems like it's going to be a fantastic project. Matter of fact, I can think of a few places right here in the downtown area that also have similarly, kind of like odd-shaped frontages and odd-shaped, you know, spaces. And wow, I'd like to see this developer, or other ones like him, them, I should say, work with, of course, with our planning department there, and maybe our economic development to come up with, with something similar. This seems like something that's really well thought out, very considerate, you know, to the, to the residents. And again, you know, it's going to be on access with a reasonably well-traveled road, with good transportation access into and out of the area. All you need now is a nice market nearby, you know, some more food, quite frankly, access to, to food. I really like this project.
Thank you very much.
Comment? And I'd just like to thank you, that, like you said, the neighborhood meeting was well-attended, and you all did an amazing presentation, and I think the residents will be extremely pleased with the project.
Thank you very much.
No more comments? Set up a motion for item ZN 2118. I don't have any blue cards. I'll just close the public hearing.
Well, in that case, if, if no one has anything to add, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I believe your card was for item 12 and further. This is item 11.
You have a, you need to fill out a blue card if you want to speak on an agenda item. Okay. Moving on.
We're waiting for the last vote.
Thank you very much.
Item 12, approve ZN 2218 Villages at Tully Springs Village One Phase Two for applicant KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property reclassification from MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential up to 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 Plan Plant, excuse me, Master Plan Community Residential to 13 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ50 Master Plan Community Residential to 50 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-SP Master Plan Community Public Semi-Public District to PSP-PCD Public Semi-Public Plan Community District, generally located in an area bounded by Elkhorn Road to the west, Clark County 215 to the south, Grand Teton Drive to the north, and Revere Street to the east, a portion of APM 126 16601 001 and 124 16416 002. Item 13, approve ZN 2318 Villages at Tully Springs Village One Phase Two for applicant KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property reclassification from MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential up to 10 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-RZ13 Master Plan Community Residential 13 dwelling units acre district, RCL-PCD Medium Density Residential Plan Community District, generally located at the southeast corner of Elkhorn Road and the Clayton Street alignment, a portion of APM 124 16601 001. Item 14, approve ZN 2418 Villages at Tully Springs Village One Phase Two for applicant KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property reclassification from MPC-RZ50 Master Plan Community Residential up to 50 dwelling units acre district, to R4-PCD Very High Density Residential Plan Community District, generally bounded by Elkhorn Road to the north, Clayton Street alignment to the east, and Clark County 215 to the south, a portion, portion of APM 124 16601 001. Item 15, approve ZN 2518 Villages at Tully Springs Village One Phase Two for applicant KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property reclassification from MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential up to 10 dwelling units acre district, to R1-PCD Medium Below Density Residential Plan Community District, generally located south of Elkhorn Road and Grand Teton Drive intersection, a portion of APM 124 16601 001. Item 16, approve ZN 2618 Villages at Tully Springs Villages One Phase Two for applicant KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property reclassification from MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential up to 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 Master Plan Community Residential 13 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-SP Master Plan Community Public Semi-Public District to R2-PCD Medium Density Residential Plan Community District, generally located north of Clark County 215, approximately 1,000 feet southeast of the intersection of Elkhorn Road and Grand Teton Drive, a portion of APM 124 16601 001. Item 17, approve ZN 2718 Villages at Tully Springs Village One Phase Two for applicant KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property classification from MPC- KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property reclassification from MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential, up to 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 Master Plan Community Residential, up to 13 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-SP Master Plan Community Public Semi-Public District, to PSP-PCD Public Semi-Public Plan Community District, generally located north of Clark County 215, east of Elkhorn Road, and 1,200 feet south of the intersection of Elkhorn Road and Grand Teton Drive, a portion of APN 124 16601001. Item 18, approved ZN 2818, Villages at Tulie Springs, Village 1, Phase 2, for applicant KBSSR Park Highlands LLC to request a property reclassification from MPC-RZ6 Master Plan Community Residential, 6 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential, 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 Master Plan Community Residential, 13 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-SP Master Plan Community Public Semi-Public District to PSP-PCD Public Semi-Public Plan Community District, generally bounded by Grand Teton Drive and Elkhorn Road, APNs 124 16111001, 002, 003, and 006, 124 16211001, 002, 005, and 006, 124 16311001, and 124 1641601.
Just for the record, we'll have the one presentation for items 12 through 18 since they're all related.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of council. Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Drive, here on behalf of the applicant for the Villages at Tulie Springs. This is the land use plan that's approved as part of the development agreement for the Villages at Tulie Springs. What you have before you tonight are a series of zone changes that are consistent with what's already approved on your land use plan. This is Village 1 located here, and actually Village 1 has been broken up into a number of phases. In yellow here, you'll see Phase 2, and these are the zone changes that are on your agenda here this evening related to only Phase 2 in yellow. We very much appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. Again, for the most part, from a density standpoint, the zone changes that we've requested are consistent with the densities that were approved as part of the development agreement, and that hasn't changed. This is just more of a housekeeping item to place the zoning on the property to be consistent with the land use plan. So we very much appreciate your recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Counsel, any questions or comments? Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I read this over very closely, you know, I've been getting several emails and phone calls on just about every time we get notices sent out there because the zoning has been changed or changing incrementally along the way. And the only thing I could say for the record is that, and I share this with our community who have concerns about high density and changes in some of the notices that they get because they are somewhat difficult to understand. But, you know, nothing has changed in our development agreement. No density has been increased. No apartments have been added. And we're still going forward with everything based on the community meetings that we had at Aliante Casino most recently, Stephanie. And I know that Mr. Gronauer will be visiting Sun City, Aliante, on the 24th. We have a lunch set up there so he could present up there to all of the interested parties in Sun City because they do, they do kind of align themselves with Homing Pigeon and the Clayton Street alignment over there. So with that, I am fine with this, Mayor Protem. I don't know if we have someone speak before I make a motion.
I have one blue card, Mr. Bichard.
Yeah, I've got three big issues. The first one is water efficiency and energy efficiency. My house was built in 2001. It is a dinosaur. It needs to be torn down and rebuilt because it was built to no codes at all. I can show you homes in my home state of Iowa that were built in 1930 that were water-efficient, more energy-efficient. The last five years, the weather in Las Vegas has gotten hotter. Summers have gotten longer. My electric bill with solar panels was $650 for the month of August. My water bill, the highest water bill I ever got, $116 because my house is not water-efficient. It's laid out wrong. The house is not insulated correctly, has no overhangs, has single-pane glass. So I, keep in mind, climate change is not going to go away. It's going to get worse and worse every year. I want to make sure these homes now are still going to be livable five years from now, 10 years from now, because it's not going to get better. It's getting worse every year. Scientists are saying now we have 20 years left to solve this problem, or it's, we've passed the tipping point. Also, I hear all this stuff, it's, nothing's been changed. It's not high-density, but everywhere I go, I see homes now where there's sidewalks on one side of the street only. I see houses where you can't park your car in the driveway, which means if you can't park your car in the driveway, more and more cars are going to be in the street, the houses are closer together, and you are creating, I've told this to the mayor, who isn't here tonight, we are, I don't want to build the slums of tomorrow today. We've got to take a, I mean, I know the developers, the main job of these developers is to make money. That's the first thing they, we want to make as much money as we can. So without a government that's going to stand up to these people, they're going to build more crap, just like the piece of crap I've got that I have to live in. So, you know, we got to make sure that they're using the right type of windows. We got to make sure the insulation's not blown in. We got to make sure they're using air conditioning that is heavier than what's needed, because I'm telling you right now, the reason my electric bill was so high is the air conditioning units that are at my house were never meant to be used in 112-degree heat. After they get past 102, they just don't work anymore. They keep, but they keep using electricity. So these are big concerns for me, and they should be big concerns for this city government because that's your job, is to make sure these people build houses that are going to be efficient over the next 10 to 15 years because the problem's going to get bigger. So that's my question, and those are my concerns.
That's the only blue card I have. I'd like to close the public hearing and call for a motion. I'm sorry, Stephanie, go ahead. Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bichard. You make some very good points. But with that, I'll be very happy to make a motion to approve items 12 through 18.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And all the homes are very efficient these days. They keep improving, so we're proud of the builders that'll be in Tulie Springs.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Item 19, approved ZN 2918, North 15 Logistics, for applicant Panatoni Development Company to request a property reclassification from M1 Business Park Industrial District to M2 General Industrial District located north of Interstate 15, approximately 800 feet west of Speedway Boulevard, APN 123 22701002. Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Argier, 3773 Howard Hughes Parkway, Suite 140S, here on behalf of the applicant. We're here this evening for a request for a zone change from M1 to M2. The parcel directly to the north is 28 acres, which is already Zone M2. This is just, was requested by city staff to sort of clean up the site, and the ultimate plan is to put a parcel map over the property to combine the two parcels. We appreciate and concur with staff and planning commission's recommendation for approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, well, thank you very much for coming down. Of course, this is in Ward 1. So is there any particular plans for any type of business that's going to be going in here, or any type of industry?
These, the plans are for two industrial warehouse distribution speculative buildings. So we're currently in with the city now for permitting for two buildings totaling 550,000 square feet. At this time, there are no potential tenants or users for the buildings, but we're actively marketing, but we anticipate distribution and warehousing users. No, we don't expect manufacturing, but it is a possibility.
Well, at least it's open, and I guess that's why it makes it more valuable like that in that way. Well, hey, over a half million square feet, I have a feeling that you probably will not be having to sit on this property for a long time. Again, I wanted to commend you and, of course, commend our staff working with you to do this. And, of course, once you start building, you'll find that our staff are top-notch to deal with, if you haven't worked with them. And again, I'm really proud of the fact that it's a city north of Vegas that's leading the entire region here in diversification of our economy. And if my colleagues don't have anything else, I know I'd like to make a motion to
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 20, approved ZN 3018, Decatur-Grand Teton, for applicant Beazer Homes to request a property reclassification from RE Ranch Estates District to R1 Single Family Low Density District located east of Decatur Boulevard, approximately 400 feet north of Grand Teton Drive, APN 124 07401003.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Not, I'll take a motion. I'm so sorry. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Name's Emilio Villarosa, 3283 East Farm Springs Road, Suite 300. I'm here to represent the applicant, and I just wanted to point out, there was a miscommunication with my client about initial briefing that I missed. I deeply apologize if I offended anybody, as far as that goes. But basically, we're proposing a 22-lot residential subdivision with deeper yard lots. Basically, we're proposing to rezone from residential rural estates to R1 zoning with the density of 4.4 dwelling units per acre. In addition to, the proposed zoning agrees with the surrounding area. We're also providing, each home would be provided with fire sprinkler protection, which is uncommon for city of North Las Vegas. We appreciate and concur with staff recommendations. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to ask them.
I have a few questions, if I may. What is the average lot size and the square footage of the units on average of the buildings?
The lot size on average is roughly 7,345 square feet, ranging from a minimum lot size of 6, about 6,300 square feet to 10,000, a little over 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
In regards to the home square footage, it ranges from a little over 2,000 square feet to 3,700 square feet.
Okay. Will your project, I know it's 400 feet north of Grand Teton, will your project have any impact on the infrastructure and realignment of Grand Teton with Grand Teton to the west side of Decatur? You know, you have that intersection, you have to basically turn right to go straight on Grand Teton when you go west of Decatur. Will you, your project have any impact on that?
We're basically coordinating with Public Works in regards to requirements, in regards to our house re-improvements.
Okay.
So we'll be complying with them.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have no blue cards. I'll close the public hearing. We were just looking for if you had a rendering of it. We just found it.
Awesome. I'd like to make the motion on item number 22 to approve.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Item 21, approved ZOA 0318, City of North Las Vegas, for applicant City of North Las Vegas to request an amendment to Title 17, zoning ordinance, to allow the streamlining of entitlement applications within designated redevelopment areas.
Any questions or comments on item 21?
No, just, of course, I just wanted to make a quick comment that this is to make the development, of course, and the redevelopment area a little bit more of a, more a time-efficient process, what with, of course, resurgence in the downtown area. As I understand, this will cut easily two to four weeks from the development process, and doesn't sound like a whole lot, but, you know, actually like a two-month thing, I mean, two months where you're paying interest on a project and still not seeing any sort of return? Well, you know, that could, that could be something that might discourage someone. But, of course, once we have this passed, I guess the renown that we've been building for being an easy-to-work-with city and being a quick process, I think this is going to add, I think this will add value to the downtown area. And with that, I have an enthusiastic motion to pass. Although I don't think that there's an enthusiastic button, motion button, but if there was, I'd be hitting that one.
And it enthusiastically passes. All right, moving on to business.
Item 22, approved First Amendment to the Asbestos Abatement and Property Demolition Services Agreement with A&amp;B Environmental LLC, increasing the amount of the original agreement from $49,080 to $56,865 funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Special Purpose Grant, NV44SBG502, for additional asbestos services.
Are we behind on this?
Yeah, we're just waiting for the screen to catch up.
Okay.
Questions or comments while we're waiting?
We may have to do manual votes from here. It appears to be locked. Frozen.
It is a little chilly.
Okay, so I need a motion on item 22, please. We'll just do a voice vote.
Motion. Give us maybe one second. Well, there we go. Who made the motion?
Councilwoman Barone made the motion.
Councilwoman Barone. Is it pressed up there for the motion?
It says number 22.
That's the item.
We're on number 22.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, motion passes.
We need one more screen up here.
Item 23, approved deed of dedication for 14,766 plus or minus square feet of land located at the southwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard and White Street, APN 139 2331060.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Just, if you allow me, just real fast, hey, folks, there's some exciting things coming to the downtown area. What this little motion does, what this item does, is to help us reshape the immediate area around one of our really important acquisitions, the White Street School and the Kenyon Elementary Building, which will soon be our newest library, and the entire learning center. I'm really excited because this will give us parking and some on-street parking and some better access there, and I think people are going to be really, really happy with what we do with our new park and learning area there. And I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this one. Now, that is if no one else has anything to say.
Motion passes.
Item 24, authorize issuance of purchase orders in the total amount of $129,299, $118,923 to Ford Country, $7,976 to Wired Designs. $118,923 to Ford Country, $7,976 to Wired Designs, and $2,400 for miscellaneous items to be installed by fleet staff using the competitive bidding exception for NRS 332 Local Government Purchasing Act for the purchase and associated outfits of two 2018 Ford F-150s and two 2019 Ford F-150s for the Utilities Department CIP Project W0065.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 24.
Item 25, pass and adopt Resolution Number 2617 establishing the city's state legislative platform for the 2019 Nevada State Legislature.
Mr. City Manager.
I had it on, turned it off. Mayor Protem and Counsel, this is, as you know, per NRS, we have to submit to the LCB a title for our BDRs. This year, we're going to be going to the legislature specifically with one BDR, and I'll talk, just highlight a little bit of it tonight, but our plan is, is to bring this back to Counsel to get the adoption of the title tonight, and then bring back some more formal language to Counsel at the only meeting we have in December. I think we only have one meeting, no, first meeting in December, we have two meetings in November. I'm getting my months confused. So what we'd like to do is, as posted on the agenda, is do a little bit of cleanup to our city charter. There's some older language, kind of some grammatical enhancements, just some cleanup that we need to do there. We also want to substantively add a few things and correct a few things in the charter. So for example, one of the things is the charter allows for a special meeting, but doesn't allow much business to be conducted there, but yet if we are to notice and have proper notice per the NRS for a special meeting, that we'd like to be able to have the option for Mayor and Counsel to be able to conduct some business in that meeting. That's something, as we've worked through and game-planned some different options with economic development projects in the past, not having the flexibility to be able to notice a special meeting sometimes could impact us with state deadlines for economic development and GOED and things like that. So that's an example. Some of our budgeting process, our ability to have special meetings as we're moving through the budgeting process, so we'd like to add some language there. We also want to change some of the language that we learned in January, as far as our provisions in our charter for removal or suspension of the city manager are kind of, they're a little antiquated, they're a little difficult, and so we're going to propose making some changes there that are consistent with what Henderson did in the 2015 session, as far as what their removal provisions are in their charter. Something that we've talked with the courts about is we don't have any provisions in our city charter for allowing hearing commissions, and so this would, adding some language in there that allows hearing commissions to be impaneled. So these are some of the things that we're looking to do, they're pretty minor changes, but one of the things is, you know, that's also not in the charter, is we don't have a charter committee. So that's something that some cities have, it's a formal committee that looks over charter changes, and due to not having that, that's the reason that, just in kind of, not really an abundance of caution, but just to show that we're, every single word of our charter matters, I mean, that's the founding document of the city. And so when we bring it back in December, we'll have every specific change, there's some, some changes are really minute, like I said, where the is being taken out, and we'll bring those back in December for a more formal meeting where we can go through every single change, but that's kind of high level. What we're looking at, as you all know from, in the past, is as we move these concepts into LCB for drafting of the bills, we then bring that back to Mayor and Counsel to look at, to see the kind of language that's been put together, and then we move from there into the legislative session in February. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, but that's generally Staff's presentation on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Questions, comments? Motion, please.
More to approve.
We're voting on the presentation. We're voting on the presentation.
Just to pass and adopt the resolution.
For the title to go to the LCB. Yes, sir.
Motion passes.
Item 26, pass and adopt Resolution Number 2619 permitting sale of certain real property owned by the City of North Las Vegas pursuant to NRS 268.061.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
No, just like to make a motion to approve.
Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Ordinances listed under final action were introduced at a previous council meeting for action at this meeting, but may include emergency ordinances. Item 27, pass and adopt ordinance number 2902 amending section 050 of chapter 72 of Title 15 of the Misful Code by amending ordinance number 2560 by adding a definition of fire code official amending section 130 of chapter 72 of Title 15 of the Misful Code by repealing ordinance number 2860, and amending ordinance number 2560 by adding a new section 130 of chapter 72 of Title 15 that includes acknowledgement that the fire code official applies and interprets the city's technical fire codes, and that increases the numbers, the number of members on the joint board of appeals and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Any questions or comments on item 27? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll be happy to make a motion to approve.
Item 28, pass and adopt ordinance number 2918 amending section 010 of chapter 16 Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 7.03 plus or minus acres therein from an MPC-RZ10 master planned community residential to 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 master planned community residential up to 13 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ50 master planned community residential up to 50 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-PSP master planned community public semi-public district to PSP-PCD public semi-public planned community district, ZN 2218 Village at Julie Springs, Village 1 Phase 2 for property generally located in an area bounded by Elkhorn Road to the west, Clark County 215 to the south, Grand Teton Drive to the north, and Riviera Street to the east, and providing further matters properly related thereto.
Counsel, questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll be happy to make a motion to approve. Mayor Protem.
Motion passes.
Item 29, pass and adopt ordinance number 2919 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 15.25 plus or minus acres therein from an MPC-RZ10 master planned community residential to 10 dwelling units acre district, an MPC-RZ13 master planned community residential to 13 dwelling units acre district, to RCL-PCD medium density residential planned community district, ZN 2318 Village at Julie Springs, Village 1 Phase 2, generally located at the southeast corner of Elkhorn Road and the Clayton Street alignment, and providing further matters properly related thereto.
Counsel, questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't have any questions or comments from my colleagues. Again, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion passes.
Item 20, pass and adopt ordinance number 2920 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 14.06 plus or minus acres therein from an MPC-RZ50 master planned community residential to 50 dwelling units acre district, to R4-PCD very high density residential planned community district, ZN 2418 Village at Julie Springs, Village 1 Phase 2, generally bounded by Elkhorn Road to the north, Clayton Street alignment to the east, and Clark County 215 to the south, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem, once again, before I make the motion, this is nothing that hasn't been approved already, so I have no problem with making a motion to approve item number 30.
Item 31, pass and adopt ordinance number 2921 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 4.46 plus or minus acres therein from an MPC-RZ10 master planned community residential to 10 dwelling units acre district, to R1-PCD medium low density residential planned community district, ZN 2518 Village at Julie Springs, Village 1 Phase 2, generally located south of Elkhorn Road in Grand Teton Drive intersection, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Once again, Mayor Protem, without any questions from my colleagues, I'll make a motion to approve.
Item 32, pass and adopt ordinance number 2922 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 59.21 plus or minus acres therein from an MPC-RZ10 master planned community residential to 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 master planned community residential up to 13 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-PSP master planned community public semi-public district, to R2-PCD medium density, medium high density residential planned community district, ZN 2618 Village at Julie Springs, Village 1 Phase 2, for property generally located north of Clark County 215, approximately 1,000 feet southeast of the intersection of Elkhorn Road and Grand Teton Drive, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I think like tonight, normally if it's happening in North Las Vegas, it's like Ward 1, but like tonight, it's Ward 4. If it's happening in North Las Vegas, it's Ward 4, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Counsel. If you want more, you go to four.
Motion passes.
Item 33, pass and adopt ordinance number 2923 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 10 plus or minus acres therein from an MPC-RZ10 master planned community residential up to 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 master planned community residential up to 13 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-PSP master planned community public semi-public district, to PSP-PCD public semi-public planned community district, ZN 2718 Village at Julie Springs, Village 1 Phase 2 for property generally located north of Clark County 215, east of Elkhorn Road, and 1,200 feet south of the intersection of Elkhorn Road and Grand Teton Drive, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Questions or comments?
Move to approve item number 33.
Item 34, pass and adopt ordinance number 2924 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 37.40 plus or minus acres therein from an MPC-RZ6 master planned community residential up to 6 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ10 master planned community residential up to 10 dwelling units acre district, MPC-RZ13 master planned community residential up to 13 dwelling units acre district, and MPC-PSP master planned community public semi-public district, to PSP-PCD public semi-public planned community district, ZN 2818 Village at Julie Springs, Village 1 Phase 2 for property generally bounded by Grand Teton Drive and Elkhorn Road, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Counsel, questions or comments?
No, and once again, Mayor Protem, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve item number 34.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Item 35, pass and adopt ordinance number 2925 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 1.9 acres therein from an RCL single-family compact lot residential district to a PUD-PID planned unit development district, planned infill development district consisting of 21-town homes, ZN 2118 Desert Gem, for property located south of Carey Avenue between Riviera Street and Royal Street, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 35.
Item 26, pass and adopt ordinance number 2926 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 1.67 plus or minus acres therein from an M1 Business Park Industrial District to an M2 General Industrial District, ZN 2918 North 15 Logistics, for property generally located north of Interstate 15, approximately 800 feet west of Speedway Boulevard, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Counsel, questions or comments?
More to approve.
Motion passes.
Item 37, pass and adopt ordinance number 2927 amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Misful Code by reclassifying approximately 5.02 plus or minus acres therein from an RE Ranch Estates District to an R1 Single Family Low Density District, ZN 30-18 Decatur Grand Teton, for property generally located east of Decatur Boulevard, approximately 400 feet north of Grand Teton Drive, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Counsel, questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 37.
Item 38, pass and adopt ordinance number 2928 amending Title 17 of the Misful Code relating to zoning, ZOA 0318, by amending Title 17 zoning ordinance to allow the streamlining of entitlement applications within designated redevelopment areas and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Questions or comments?
More to approve.
Item 39, pass and adopt ordinance number 2971 amending section 15.92.020 of the Misful Code by amending ordinance number 2906 in order to revise the North Las Vegas Fire Code amendments by amending section 503.2.1 of the North Las Vegas Fire Code amendments to include the proper dimensions for fire apparatus access roads when parking is allowed on such roads, and by adding section 503.2.1.1 to the North Las Vegas Fire Code amendments to set forth the fire access road dimensions for certain residential subdivisions, and to provide for other matters properly related thereto.
Counsel, questions or comments?
More to approve.
Madam City Clerk, do you need a break?
Nope, I'm good to go.
Okay, moving on to appointments.
Item 40, appointment by Councilwoman Black, a citizen member to the Library District Board of Trustees, to fill an expired term ending June 30, 2021.
I am honored to present this individual for consideration for an appointment to the Library District Board of Trustees. Her name is Kathy Reese. She is a longtime North Las Vegas resident. She's a 21-year educator in the Clark County School District and at local charter schools. She's a reading and literacy specialist with a master's degree in reading. Reading is what she does. She's a passionate supporter of libraries. She even belongs to an organization called SaveLibraries.org, so she's really big into libraries. She is very eager and excited to help move our library district forward, as we have exciting things like our new downtown library and opportunities to keep our libraries vibrant and serving our community. So with that, I'd like to recommend Kathy Reese for appointment.
Note for the viewing audience, item 41 was continued to November 7, 2018 meeting.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the City Manager's report.
Mayor Protem and Counsel, we have Jeff Albert here that'll do a brief presentation on a mayor that actually only was mayor for a year, so it's got to be brief in nature. And then I have two items after that. Thank you.
Can we get the overhead on, please? For the record, Jeff Albert, 3828 Fusiliere Drive, North Las Vegas. I'm here to do a continuing presentation on our history of our mayors for our city, and tonight, it's going to be Mayor Number 6. You can see him on the left there. So this presentation is about- So this presentation is about Albert Al Ferguson. He was born in nineteen thirteen in Buffalo, New York. As a child, he experienced the bout of polio that damaged his legs and feet. He worked hard to develop great upper body strength, and luckily was able to walk unaided until just before he died. In nineteen forty-three, at the age of thirty, he moved to Nevada. He was employed by the federal government as a heavy equipment mechanic. Ferguson also served as a local Baptist church leader in North Las Vegas. In nineteen fifty-four, there was a scandal in North Las Vegas that involved then-mayor Earl Webb, along with three male city council members. The three city coun, excuse me, only councilwoman Dorothy Porter escaped unscathed. The three councilmen resigned one by one during the summer of nineteen fifty-four. Mayor Webb stubbornly tried to hang on to his office. When Al Ferguson's name came up to fill a city council seat, the mayor tried to block his appointment, claiming that outgoing councilmen could not vote for their own replacements. With the city manager's support, the council defied the mayor, who refused to attend the meeting, and on August thirty-first, nineteen fifty-four, they appointed Ferguson as the councilman in Ward Four. The next day, Mayor Webb reluctantly approved Ferguson's appointment, and soon thereafter succumbed to public pressure and finally resigned. The new council immediately appointed councilwoman Dorothy Porter as mayor. Porter went on to serve as mayor for about twenty months, when she decided to resign in May of nineteen fifty-six for personal reasons. Al Ferguson was offered the mayor position by his fellow council members. He accepted and agreed to serve out the remaining year of Porter's term, and became the city's sixth mayor. Ferguson inherited a city, a progressive city of some thirteen thousand residents. On July fourteenth, nineteen fifty-six, a new city hall at Bruce and College, now Lake Mead, was dedicated, you can see it a little bit, it's not the best picture, but it's the only one I have, and also that same day, a city reservoir capable of holding up to three million gallons of water was designated. North Las Vegas was rated as the soundest city in Nevada for financial development. The city encompassed five square miles, eighty percent of which was developed. North Las Vegas boasted of new shopping centers, fine housing developments, and a construction boom. Furthermore, the city had a Bank of Las Vegas branch. And here's a photo of the mayor visiting the branch, and it was also expecting a new Class One independent post office with its own postmaster. Under Ferguson, in October of nineteen fifty-six, a civil service system was implemented for the city's seventy-five employees. The fire department had eight firemen, along with some volunteers, on standby. Here's an old photo of the fire station with the firemen in front of their units. The city owned seventeen water wells, along with a large water storage tank. Telephone service was expanded to serve residents citywide, and in November, a city employees' association was formed. In April of nineteen seventy, nineteen fifty-seven, Al declared his intention to run for a full term in May. He was up against Earl Gilmore, a former councilman, Earl Hartke, a real estate consultant, Herb Hill, a motorcycle shop operator, and Ken Reynolds, a former mayor trying for a comeback. Hartke topped the field with seven hundred and twenty-three votes, Reynolds had five hundred and seventy-nine votes, Ferguson came in third with two hundred and thirty-seven, Gilmore had one ninety-nine, and the motorcycle shop owner, Hill, only had eighty-nine. Thus ended Ferguson's one year as mayor. He retired from his civil service mechanic's job with Uncle Sam, and relocated to Panaca, Nevada, where he served as the local water authority chairman. He passed away in Las Vegas in nineteen ninety-eight at age eighty-five, and was buried at Panaca. He left behind his wife Fay, four children, six grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. It was interesting that North Las Vegas had two consecutive mayors who were never elected mayor. Both served as a result of appointments. Ferguson took pride in his years of service to his city. His time in office was very productive, and unlike some of his predecessors, scandal-free. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Jeff. So first, I forgot to mention the city attorney's office for her assistance and her office assistance on our legislative platform, in particular, Rhianne Jarvis-Denman, who was very helpful. She drafted and has worked very hard on this. We might let her have a little piece of the presentation when she comes back, when it comes back in December, but I just wanna make sure I had it in my notes, but forgot to say thank you. Final item, if we could turn your attention to the overhead. I don't know if you can zoom in, if you know who that fine individual is there. But that is, we couldn't find a baby picture of this individual. I don't know if anyone knows who that is. It's Elvis? Yeah, that could be, ooh, just. That is pretty mean. Oh, Darren, who is that? We couldn't find a baby picture of Darren. Today's his birthday. So in lieu of a baby picture, we found Darren with hair. Harry or Darren. So we wanna say happy birthday, sing happy birthday to Darren.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Darren. Happy birthday to you.
I don't know why is that the microphone?
Happy birthday, Darren.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, may I please approach the council on this? In my defense...
I don't think there's anything you can say.
You know...
No defense.
I am impressed with the sleuth skills of the individuals who found that picture.
It was on Facebook.
I'm a senior class president for a small school that begged me to use Facebook as a way to create a way that all of our classmates might contact each other, and trying to protect my identity, I went under a shortened name and a disguised photograph, as you noticed there, that was hilarious at the time, to my classmates. And the sad thing about Facebook is they own your pictures once you put them on there, so that's only part me. I'd love to have that much hair, but thank you very much for the birthday wishes, and it's been a special day to be here. Thank you.
You're great in my book, because you were born in October.
Yes. On behalf of all the other Libras, I accept this birthday, Chris.
And we have a cake there. I'll remove it, because I think Gary's gonna talk, and we don't want Gary to eat it. Yeah, he was gonna eat it, so I'll take it back, but we do have a cake for afterwards, for, Dellen has some forks and things, but just wanted to do that. It wasn't very hard to find Darren's old picture. It's forever on the internet. Thank you.
Thanks for that. That was great. Okay, moving on to the public forum. Now is the time for the public to speak about issues not posted on the agenda. Remember that counsel may hear these items, but may not take any action tonight upon any items raised during the public forum. Gary Bichard.
Okay, I'll try and be brief. Okay, I wanna go back in time, two weeks ago. Couple things happened at the last city council meeting I was not happy about. One was a statement from my good friend here, the city manager, and we are friends, but he said, "We're better off paying union people what they're worth and what they want than going to arbitration, going to lawsuits." You know, as a taxpayer, that's really not what I wanna hear. You know, I believe we should be fair with these people, but I am not in favor of salaries this city cannot afford to pay. So I wasn't happy about that, but I'm sure we can still be friends. Gotta kick out of the mayor, too. I know why he's not here tonight, because two weeks ago, he broke his hand patting himself on the back. He's saying, "Boy, I've got this city turned around. No one else could do this." He's been watching Trump way too much. But I wanna bring up something, talk about history. In two thousand and six, when things just went down the toilet, here's what was going on. Stagnant pay in the private sector, huge credit card debt, and inflation at the same time, and that's what brought that boom we had to a screeching halt. Now, we are, obviously, tonight should prove that we're coming out of the recession, however, I've seen houses under construction stop being built when recessions hit. And according to an old college professor of mine from Berkeley, who wrote me a letter four weeks ago, he says, "Gary, it's coming again, because wages are stagnant. Trump can tell you all day long, it's never been this good. This country has never been good, and it won't ever be good if I ever leave this country. I'm holding this country together by myself and John Lee." He's wrong. We have people in debt up to their eyeballs, in credit card debt. Wages are stagnant, and we're having layoffs already. So before we pat ourselves on the back, we better keep our eyes open and take some of this stuff into consideration. Other than that, just wanna say one thing. We are still cleaning our streets without water, and all it's doing is putting dust in the air. We have some of the worst air in the country here in Las Vegas and North Las Vegas. How many times do we have to bring this up at city council meetings before we add water to our street cleaners? Thank you. Have a good night.
Minnie Bradley.
Minnie Bradley, eight oh-five Dosette Drive, North Las Vegas. I have a home there that I have a plumbing problem, and I lived there for eighteen years, before I lived in Windsor Park, and quite naturally, that went away. But I, the problem is, with the plumbing, it was inspected, and the pipes that ran together from the city part came up high. My part came like this, and so it developed a problem over eighteen years. It was on and off, but never this major. In August this year, I guess it decided to stop, and everything decided, I'm not gonna work anymore. So I had to call, quite naturally, plumbing people to come out, and they came out numerous of times. Now I have rotted, they have started on my house in August, and it is now October the seventeenth, and I still have dirt, and I have pitches, but I'm sure you don't wanna see them, but there, that I can only get into my house across a plank, because they have dirt and everything there that was not. I feel like they inspected the house when it was first built. Stan Park was the builder, Interstate Plumbing was the plumbing, plumbers, and they inspected the house then, and I feel like it should not have passed inspection, because it didn't connect where it should, so that the plumbing would connect to each other. Yours up high, mine down, and it goes like this, and so that makes the difference. And I, and with sixteen thousand dollars and up to fifty-one thousand dollars, and I'm a senior citizen with a disabled child, son, he's not a child, he's a grown man, but it's a danger right now for me going in and out, because he's on a walker. So by me having to take him across in a plank, it makes it very difficult, and I am afraid every time that he's gonna maybe fall off, but it's nothing that, quite naturally, you can do, but I just feel like the inspection part should have been taken care of correctly at that particular time, and they let it pass. And this is quite a bit of money that a senior citizen really cannot afford to do with a disabled son. So I would like someone to look into that, and if you wanna see the pitches, you can. I do have them, and I, there are pitches that I have copies of, so you can keep them, because I have a hundred and some odd pitches.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor Protem and counsel, I've talked to some staff members. If Ms. Bradley can just, after the meeting, just me right here, we're gonna have a couple that are in the audience come up, and we're gonna figure out who's best to talk with her about this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Steve Schof?
Good evening, everybody. Steve Schof, fifty-six, twenty-two, Midnight Breeze Street, North Las Vegas. Happy birthday, Darren. I spoke last council meeting about my water bill, and that's why I'm up here again. The mayor suggested that I speak with Randy Duvall, so I did, and it was about the eight thousand gallons of sewer water that goes out of my house every day, or not every day, but every month. So I talked to Randy about it, and he said, "That's the norm. That's what they accepted." I guess it was talked by the Utilities Advisory Board, and they came to that conclusion. That's what Randy said. Having said that, that would mean I would be using, I'd be returning ninety-six thousand gallons of water to the sewer system every year. I only used ninety-two thousand gallons of water in total. So how, why am I being billed for water that I'm not returning? I mean, I just understand that that's four thousand gallons more than I get into my house that they're charging me for. I only, in reality, returned thirty-six thousand gallons of that water back to the WRF. The rest of it is used on my landscaping during the hotter months of the year. The lower months of the year, when I don't use a lot of water, and my landscaping is pretty much turned off, I only use four thousand gallons of water a month. I figured maybe three-quarters of that could be considered to be returned back to the WRF. Times twelve is thirty-six thousand gallons. So I'm being, I feel ripped off by the city of North Las Vegas for a service that I'm not using, and I don't understand why this can't be addressed. I talked to Randy, and he seemed to think his hands are tied on this. So who do I talk to? How do I, how do I get some kind of satisfaction out of this? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Seeing no other blue cards, I'll close the public forum, and this meeting is adjourned.